I'm pleased to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council today. And let the roll call vote show that all members of the council are present today. And we have Councilmember Steve Vincent, who will conduct today's opening ceremony. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a video that I wanted to bring, but I didn't get here in time, so we won't do that tonight. But, you know, just in the last week, we had a Republican convention and the Democratic convention is starting tonight. And I think as we watch the elections go forward, I think foremost, we need to remember that we all are citizens of this great country, and we are all Americans. And with that, I'd like you to stand and repeat the pleasurable allegiance.
Item number four tonight is our special recognition. First of all, we want to acknowledge State Senator Luis Robles with us. If you want to stand and wave.[91.11][91.11](Applause). A large part of her senate district is in our fair city, and so we always appreciate having her here and what she does for our community at the legislature each year. So welcome Senator Robles. We also recognize our scout groups at this time. And I see one here with us on the front row.[111.11][111.11](Applause). And what we do with them is we have one of the scouts come up to the microphone. And some of you have been here before, I know. But if one of you could come up and introduce your troop and tell us your name and what badge you're working on and where you go to school.
I'm Bryson Kendall. I'm with Troop 171. We're working on citizenship in the community, and I go to Valley Junior High.
All right, well, welcome. We welcome your troop here, and good to see Alex and the rest of you here today. Any other scout groups out there? Didn't think I saw any. All right, we come to item five today, which is the approval of the August 21st minutes.
Mayor move for approval of August 2nd?
Okay, thank you. Any discussion to those minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
You can do that pose. Okay, minutes approved. Item six, we do have a proclamation this evening declaring September as Idle Free Awareness Month. And Councilmember Don Christensen has volunteered to read that on our behalf this evening. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the air quality in the Salt Lake Valley, including West Valley City, is degraded by excessive vehicle emissions, and whereas emissions from idling vehicles contribute significantly to air pollution and to increased rates of respiratory diseases, which adversely affect West Valley City residents, especially children, seniors, and people with weakened immune systems. And whereas, in an effort to reduce idle time and address public safety concerns, the West Valley City Police Department conducts training for its officers and for residents regarding the appropriate idling of vehicles. And whereas, the City Council of West Valley City, Utah, does hereby determine that it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of West Valley City to encourage idle-free policies and the reduction of vehicle idling within the city whenever possible. Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of West Valley City do hereby proclaim September as Idle Free Awareness Month in West Valley City, and urges all citizens and guests within the city to avoid unnecessary idling of motor vehicles.
Hey, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
We come to item seven tonight, which is our comment period. The comment period is limited to 30 minutes, and any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to five minutes. Any person wishing to comment during the comment period shall request recognition by signing up for this sheet beforehand, which was in the back there. Upon recognition, the citizen shall approach the microphone, and all comments will be directed towards us here at the dais. And no person addressed in the City Council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once during the comment period. Speakers should not expect any debate with the Mayor, Councilor, or staff. However, the Mayor, Council, and staff may respond within 30-minute period. And so we will open up the comment period of the four people who have signed up here, and then we'll take it to City Manager comments, and then if there's any City Council comments after that. And so first on our comment period, we have Andrew Saul. Is Mr. Saul here?
I think there's, Mayor, there's confusion with the Chinese group here, how the procedure is. And actually, I'm the presenter for the Chinese gate, and he would like to speak eventually.
Okay. So would Mr. Saul like to be first, or would you like to?
I think I would go after Stephen Hawes.
Okay. And Stephen Hawes has signed up to speak, so we'll just flip-flop the order.
Just for the record, I'm a little confused, because I actually, we were invited here with, to be on the agenda to speak 30 minutes on this important issue. I don't know where we were misguided on that, so if you...
Well, the comment period is 30 minutes. Each speaker can only take five, but you can tag-team a little bit and still be within the rules, I think.
Well, I am an Eagle Scout. I think I have those skills to tag-team. I think I'm probably still the youngest Eagle Scout in Salt Lake Council. I'm very proud about that. I wish to, I do have documents for the council, if we can approach.
Yes.
I'm honored here to be chosen by the Chinese leadership and community members to present on the issue of the Chinese Heritage Gate that began in a noble dream that, at the time, back in 2002, it was natural that as Chinese culture and our resettlement of our culture came into the valley, we have gave much contribution to the American climate here. And so, in that prosperity, it was natural for us to, of course, work up the idea of having a Chinese historic symbolic site that would recognize the contribution of our people. And so, as you know, this council, some council members have been around to know about this project timeline. In the records that I've looked at, Councilmember Don Christensen was quite involved at the time as well. And so, we're here to report that something has gone wrong. It's been disturbed, the project. And I'm here, I've been sent by the community to present on some developing issues around that. The documents, what is, it outlines that, it says, "Due to the lack of financial transparency, dictation of all decisions, an increasing hostile environment, and inclusion of community involvement, and board members of the Chinese Heritage Foundation of Utah, and other community leaders, request that West Valley City take the time to intervene and conduct a community impact study into the community crisis at hand." What we're talking about is, of course, when this project was launched, the leaders and community and its leadership, you know, came together, formed a foundation and a board. And as such, they did the good business of forming some decisions about where a gate should be, if it, what would that gate look like, where would it be located, from, is it ideal on State Street, off I-15? Finding the best locale is still something that the board and the community is concerned with. Very important. Yeah, all the way to how the funds would be donated, where it would be gathered, how it'd be managed, with all the fiduciary responsibilities, so it would be handled properly. Over time, of course, there, the project kind of went up and went down, and then it accelerated again, eventually around 2010 to 2011, with some excitement, and Professor Woody Fang comes with us, who is a very contributable, a big donor, who kind of got the project rolling again with some really good donations. And along with efforts and donations from the city as well, to partner to make this happen. Over time, this board and its leadership and community leaders have been trying to work with the leader, who is Terrence Chang, who, they still can't figure out how that became, how he became a chair in that place. But nonetheless, they allowed him to lead this process. And in so doing, so far, what they, all that, to this day, they've been experiencing issues with governance, transparency, and the community has been excluded from the decisions about this project entirely. Some of the issues have been outlined for you are the intuitions of governance and transparency, and what they mean by these. And so, what I'm trying to do tonight as well with the rules of the chamber is like to at least facilitate the discussion with some of the concerns that I have put together for you tonight, over the last 72-hour period of interviewing a lot of leaders and community members, and trying to take a lot of facts and a lot of issues and conflicts out there that is not good, and try to bring that picture down, that there is some concerns, that the community is not participating in this project. And it means a lot. What does that mean? They're here for you to look at and for you to question some of the leaders that are here and board members, who can also interact with you to make right some of these issues that they're concerned. I'm very proud and happy in the history of our communities, in many Asian communities, not just Chinese. But for our community, and I don't remember the last time we have brought a concern, a grave concern like this, in public, and airing it in a public forum. What a great way for it is for our community to use the spirit of being an American and come forward and use this process to present our claims and our issues, and that we're asking for some intervention where it is appropriate by the council.
You have about 30 seconds, Mr. ...
And so, I would leave you that please look at these concerns, and also some of the receipts, and along with some of the board members that are here today and their positions and who they are. The community large is here, they want some answers, and they want some to be included into this project. And so, with the rest of the community who are concerned, they're, I hope they'll come out tonight and come up here to the podium and present just some statements and concerns that they want to enlighten you with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrew Saul, would you like to be next?
Can I approach? Sorry, you forgot to ...
Yes, any handouts, if you want to just start up here.
I'm Councilman, and we're, we live in our Councilments here. Well, I just also want to add something on top of the concerns that Stephen Hawes raised for our community. And I'm, my name is Andrew Saul, I'm the current owner of the Chinatown Project in South Salt Lake. We're at the 33rd South State Street. And maybe, perhaps some of you may have the chance to be there and see our current development is now. Well, I just want to add one thing that, to be a member of the several Chinese and Asian associations, and I heard some of the local Chinese communities, people, now talking about their two gate, Chinatown gates in Salt Lake City Valley that are confusing people. So, and first of all, I, and I was actually approached by someone once that they wonder, is my gate, my Chinatown project being a nonprofit project, and being my, and some of his donation being donated to my project? I was, I was actually kind of feel weird about what happened here, and then I found out that Terrence Chang and some of the, I mean, actually, Terrence Chang mainly the main contact, he approached me to, to ask me to see if I can make some donation to the project. It's called the China Gate, Heritage Gate. And, and then I feel kind of, made me wonder what really happened. And then I found that some interesting history about it. And I found out that the project actually initiated about 10 years ago by, by some of the Chinese committee leaders. And it didn't well as it was supposed to be. And then, and then it didn't go further from then. And then after, and then after our Chinatown Project in Salt Lake City announced the groundbreaking, and all of a sudden, I heard that, oh, the Chinatown Gate initiated by Terrence Chang is going again. So I just feel a little bit confusing about what is going on. And then I've been the, actually, talk with some of the Chinese community leaders, and they also feel that they might be, they might be some interesting intention about building the gate there, and also, well, I, well, I don't, I don't know about it, but I definitely feel that by building a new gate, that definitely can help to enhance the awareness to the public about Chinese culture. But I just don't want to see that the gate confused the community. And also, I don't feel that, I know that the board, the board has already collected major donations, and most of them are from one donate donor, and also from the city of West Valley. And I hope that, I, since I've been a member of several associations, and I see maybe there's, those donations can go somewhere maybe better, can benefit our Chinese community for, I know there are a lot of good programs that they have funded, funds to run, and they, I think some community associations, they deserve, they can use maybe the money, the donations in better way to serve our community, and also to increase our awareness to the public. And...
30 seconds, sir.
And he's pretty much, and I personally, I did not donate to the project, and I feel, I, I do, our company do believe that we, we like, we believe projects that are good for communities, and we always support that, like Asian, the Asian Festival, and Vietnamese Festival, and other, the Chinese Festival. And also, like, I, I also actually made donations, I mean, support contribution to, to Mayor Winter for his campaign, to believe that he can, I mean, these things can benefit our port, our community, you know, our Chinese community as a whole. But this project, I did not personally support, and I see a lot of Chinese, Asian committee did not support this project. So I hope that the council member can reconsider the project, and also start the investigation on the project.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.[1180.33][1180.33](Applause).
Professor, what do you follow? If you'd like to take your...
(Inaudible) promise me, I don't have to get up.[1193.16][1193.16](Laughter). That was a pretense. (Inaudible). Actually, I was waiting to introduce myself. This is back in '02, 10 years ago. Terry came to me, the West Valley City and Nantou, it was a sister city in Taiwan, Nantou City in Taiwan, tried to see whether we can have a project go on, because the West Valley City here in the Cultural Services Center, some name, there may be possibility that we can have some kind of building, or some kind of memorial construction, or gate, or whatever. So Terry was the one that really kicked off this project, and he came to me, I donated only 5,000 at the time, and so forth. But at that time, our estimate, let me make the long story short, that's probably we need about 200,000 to come up with something halfway decent. Of course, those projects can be big and small, and therefore, a necessary fund can be modified accordingly. At that time, I was the chairman of the board. Therefore, I like to say this to the group, for those that are coming here related to this China Gate, I thought of feel a little bit guilty myself. I was the chairman of the board for the first about eight years, but in, two years ago, I resigned myself from the board, because I'm getting too old, I cannot, doctor do not allow me to drive a night, like tonight, I actually, doctor Chang gave me a ride, come over here. And so I said, no, I'm not just suitable to serve on the board, and so I resigned myself. Now, the first eight years, to be honest, there's really not much activity, because there's, if any expense poses minor, for instance, Terry get together with somebody, maybe, you know, a simple hit out, or whatever, so expenses very, very small, I know that. But for those eight years as a board or director, I think it's my negligence, and I apologize for that, I never added the accounting, even once, because there's really no activity. I'm sure the West Valley Council member, Mayor, and all the other members know that this project been postponed and dragged on for quite a while, until about two years ago. But by then, I resigned myself, I say, you know, you, or the young kids, you know, you have the energy and time and so forth, you guys take over and do it. So the last two years, I never really get involved, or at least, not under the, not under the pretense of board member. Of course, Terry did send me emails of the progress and so forth. Today, I think the major problem, let me make the long story short, is that I think the accounting part is less than crystal clear, okay? And so, there's a frustration on the current board members to get the project going and so forth. What I like to have the council member and the mayor allow us, I like to invite few people, because I feel I'm possibly partially guilty, okay, for the past action. And I'd like to have some representative and sit down with Terry off the record, go through the book, see we can clarify it, all the entry and all the expense and so forth. Now, some of those money, to be honest, he did send me the list of the donation and so forth, even that is not clear, because I compare that to my checkbook, my foundation checkbook, and more than 10,000 was not listed there. But all those 10,000 are donated through Heritage Foundation for other purposes, because the Chinese society in early years, usually they don't have 401(c)(1) and so forth, and therefore, it's lots of those donations, it's not taxable, as you know, if you don't have that. And so for the convenience of that, we say, okay, let's go through Heritage Foundation. But nevertheless, whatever the money come in, it should be listed, and if it's used or reserved, not for the gate, but you see a Chinese festival, or whatever the other activity, it should have expense and send to this organization or society of that amount. And I believe though, the ones, lots of board member right now have questioned, that they are not clear, and maybe Terry is a little bit less than, shall I say, voluntary willing to do that, and therefore cause some of the concern and so forth.
30 seconds, sir.
I like to see the way that we can have, say, say, four or five people, and then meet Terry off the record. He still respect me a lot, because my foundation donated more than 100,000 to this project. So I think I can have some sway and try to twist this arm a little bit, see whether we can clarify this matter. Now, if this matter cannot be clarified, or cannot be solved at this stage, then I think they'll go back to this council for your decision as to what the proper measures or actions that you have to take. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ralph Astoria that's also signed up to speak tonight in our comment period. Mr. Astoria?
Well, good evening. You haven't heard from me for a while. And I know you've been busy, Mayor, so I didn't want to do any moaning and groaning, but now you're through, now you're doing your regular job. So, we're going to go back to what I approached you on a year ago, about our parking lot. I mean, we might get the ordinance officer giving West Valley City a citation for weeds growing in it again. So I would like to see you make sure that them weeds are cleared up again on that overflow parking lot. I mean, it's terrible when an old, an old man like me has to come up to you kids and present this to you, when you drive, well, I mean, you don't drive this far east, you know, but I mean, and north, but...
You mean on the Maverick Center overflow?
That's it. You know which one it was. And it's, the weeds are growing again, they're getting healthy, and apparently, we don't take care of them until somebody comes up and makes us aware of them. I mean, I don't know if it's, we ain't got enough money to go over there, or what, but I, I know that there's a lot of venues coming in, and let's, let's take, again, like I said a year ago, let's take pride in our city. West Valley City owns that. Let's, let's do what we gotta do to make sure that our city stays clean, because it seems to me like right now, there's a war between West Valley City and the taggers, because they're taking care of every, everything over here. I've got a neighbor, that poor guy gets tagged about once every other week, and I see the guys come over and paint his fence. And now I just noticed again yesterday morning, they tagged it again only a little bit farther, a little bit longer, so now we'll get more of his fence painted. Coming over here, right along 2700, you can see where they're tagging again. So I mean, you know, that's, I wished I could catch them, and I'd call 911, or do a few other things, but, you know, yeah, I've lived here for a long time, and I'm an old man, and I take a lot of pride in this city. And, you know, irregardless of what side of the city we live on, you know, I mean, Steve said, we're all Americans, and we're all supposed to care for one another. Listen to the politicians, you wouldn't believe it, but anyway, I would appreciate if we could address the weeds again, and I don't know what we're going to do with tagging. But we need, I mean, let them cruise, let the police cruise around, and it's got to be later at night when they're doing it. So, any help that you can give us here on the, I live on the west side of Salt Lake, but I'm on the east side of West Valley, so take care of us, will you?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Astoria. Good to see you again. This concludes the public comment, but the other part of our comment period, Mr. City Manager, is there anything you'd like to add to the comments we've heard tonight, or anything else on your mind?
Thanks, Mayor. So since this is the first opportunity I've had to make City Manager comments under the revised public comment period, no, actually, I hadn't really thought about anything. revised public comment period, no, actually, I hadn't really thought about anything to bring to the meeting itself. In response to, uh, the commentary that was given tonight, I can say that a group of the folks has met with, uh, some of the staff members already, Mr. Paul Isaac, and we are looking into how we can help with the situation, hopefully allay any concerns. I know also, uh, Councilman Hoon has also met with them and there are a number of people, of course, that would be very concerned about helping out wherever we can with that. Obviously, the city has already made themselves a great investment, uh, both monetarily and time-wise and support-wise for the cause. So of course, we want to see this, uh, project proceed, uh, on the up and up and above board and get completed in a, in a good fashion. So we certainly will work towards that with them in whatever way we can. And I guess as far as the other commentary, just the short answer is sure, yeah, we can get the weeds cut.
Does that fall under Centennial Management's subcontract with us or is that-
You know, I never remember, every year I had to go back and check because either Centennial or Parks or Ross or one of the three, yeah, yeah, so we'll get it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh, let's see, comment period seven C, City Council comments. Is anyone on the council who'd like to comment this evening?
I, I will. Um, I, uh, personally appreciate all of you to come here today and, uh, rest your concern about the Chinese, uh, gate. We're gonna go and do our opening here very soon. Um, Utah Cultural Celebration Center is the place, is a great place for all of us and, uh, hopefully we'll keep that place, gonna be very nice and very pleasant for everyone of us to enjoy, uh, in that area. And, uh, we try to our best to, uh, make that happen and try to help you guys out, uh, to do what we can to have a good celebration on, in September, uh, between September 26th and 28th, is that right? Um, and, uh, thanks for your time to come here and, and rest your concern, appreciate that very much.
I'll, I'll add my comment as a, as the chair of the council in essence, as mayor. Uh, first of all, I see a lot of good friends tonight and people I've known for a long time and some I've known not as long that are newer friends and we appreciate you coming and appreciate your concern. Um, there, we're limited a little bit as a city entity on what we can do to, um, meddle with private organizations or nonprofit organizations when you have, uh, people not abiding by bylaws and different things. There may be some things on the state level that can be done, but our hands are a little bit tied on the, the city level. I thought that the best suggestion tonight was Professor Fong, who said maybe, uh, we sit down with Terry Chan and, and, and go through the books and just make sure everything's on the up and up and if there's not, then ask those tough questions. There's not a formal way that we would do that and unofficially, we can certainly do that. I'm a happy person to even help do that if that's, if that would be helpful. Uh, because all of us care about the preservation of our heritage, regardless of what your heritage is and, and there's a soft spot in my heart, I know, for the Chinese people and, and the great heritage that, that civilization and people bring to our community. Um, I would ask for the next, as Councilmember Hune mentioned, um, we, we do have the, the gate dedication coming up the end of this month. And those of you who have driven by 3300 South have seen it and it's a wonderful, regardless of, of how it got here, and it sounds like there's some interesting details to how it got here, um, it's a wonderful testament, this community, that there is a Chinese community here in West Valley City and here in Utah generally. And, uh, being in a park-like setting next to the Olmec Head from Mexico and some other treasures from different parts of the world, it is a more unique artistic point as opposed to, say, the beautiful gate on State Street by the, by Salt Lake's Chinatown. So hopefully there isn't confusion by people because they do serve different purposes. Uh, but I'd encourage all of us to, to applaud this, uh, new addition to our state and our community, which many of you have helped to fund. And let, let's get through the next few weeks here of that. And then, uh, Professor Fong, if you'd like to, to reach out to me personally, I'd be happy to arrange a meeting with Terry Chan, who I also know, and, and, and sit down the three of us, or if there's maybe a couple others we ought to have there and, and have the discussion and see. Because obviously if some of you have made donations in the past there, you want to make sure they went to where they were intended. And again, legally, there's nothing we can do to force that on the city level, uh, but certainly as community leaders, we're deeply concerned about that. I, I had in the audience, well, it's still part of my comment time, so I'll, I'll yield to your hand if you have a quick question.
Um, my name is Suzie and I was, uh, past president for Chinese Society Utah. And I do want to bring something to you that perhaps you thought of this as a, just a private issue in terms of Chinese Heritage Foundation.
You know what, if it's gonna be a comment longer than five seconds, we probably ought to have you come on the microphone.
Okay, good.
Sorry, it needs to be recorded for our minutes.
Okay.
And, and council, since we're still within the half hour for the comment period, albeit barely, are you okay if we have one more comment from-
I promise it's 30 seconds. So, you know, I think you guys look at this as just about the Chinese Heritage Foundation and this is an issue that you probably want to solve, um, in a more personal manner, but I wanted to bring an issue up that a lot of our donation did what's right to check, that's right to West Valley City. So if this has everything to do with the city, this isn't just a private foundation issue. A lot of our, um, funds, um, a lot, a huge fund from, from, um, Taiwan, where I'm from, was checked, make, made out to West Valley City. It wasn't made out to Chinese Heritage Foundation. And on that end, um, you know, perhaps when we have time to discuss the government's portion of it, whether the check is made to the West Valley City or, um, Heritage Foundation, we see need to be made and so we know where the money went.
Is there a, is there a spokesperson for this group that I could email? We could email some information?
Yes, the, the current president of Chinese Society Utah.
If you could give me a business card or even just write it down on a piece of paper before you leave your contact information, because what I'll ask our city manager to do is, is, uh, can we look there, sir, of any of the checks that have come in made at West Valley City on this topic and, and, uh, give an accounting to where those went?
Since we are kind of irregularly going through the public comment period already, Mayor, yeah, that's right, if I can make another comment as well and add to that. Yes, we know that dollars have come into West Valley City, yes, we have accounted for them, yes, they were all kept in a reserve fund and in fact, we're already compiling that because there has been this question or isn't. I don't think it's going to resolve the question because there are a lot of dollars that did not go through the city. But for clarification of that question, yes, we're aware of those dollars that came to the city and they're all still there.
But absolutely-
And we, we already have started compiling that, uh, accounting just record for anybody who would like to see it, Mayor.
Thank you. You know, we, we are out of our comment period time and so by the rules of this body, I can't unilaterally extend that. If my colleagues would like to, then, then we can do that, otherwise we have, we're bound by our rules to proceed with the meeting. I, I, I can't recognize unless there's any motion by the council to extend the comment period and I'm not hearing one. Uh, but some of us will be here informally after, if there's something after the meeting that you want to bring up in a informal setting. Um, also each week we have a this comment period format, so people are, are welcome to come back to. Item number eight this evening is we resolutions, we have two resolutions to consider. Uh, Mr. Pilot, if you could please introduce resolution 12 dash 130.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we are working with Salt Lake County to build a second phase of the Utah-Salt Lake Canal Trail System. This is between 4800 West and 3600 West. Our portion of the project is $100,000. The county's portion is 300,000, an estimated $400,000 project, so we're asking for formal permission to spend that $100,000 on a parking package.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pilot. Uh, council members, any discussion on 12 dash 130?
May I have approval of 12 130?
Second. Motion is second, any discussion to that motion?
Just a comment that, uh, this is just a continuation of a great project that was started a few years ago and it's a great asset to the community and to, to the health and fitness of our, our residents if they will use it, use it and get out and ride and jog.
I would say well said, I was gonna echo the same sentiments, but it's also a, a good transportation corridor that will be a little more safe than, than using some of the main streets.
Hey, thank you. Any other comments on 130? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Mr. Pilot, please introduce resolution 12 dash 131.
Thank you, sir. As we are taking over our own billing for the stormwater and sanitation fees, we have negotiated a termination agreement with Rocket Mountain Power under the existing contract we hold with them. So we are asking for approval to exercise that termination agreement.
Okay, thank you. Council, what's your pleasure on 12 dash 131?
Motion to approve the resolution 12 dash 131.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Any discussion to that one?
I'd like to make another comment.
Please.
I, I thought with our presentation last week that was interesting to see that the recovery rate of collecting our, our fees will go up dramatically as a result of doing this, so, uh, should help, uh, the, the city in that, that format because Rocket Mountain Power wasn't inclined to go out and collect when, when bills weren't paid, so now we have more control over that and this will be a good thing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve 12 dash 131, say aye.
Aye.
That also appears to be passionamously. Any need for executive session this evening, anyone? No? Okay, then we come to item 10, which is to adjourn the council meeting.
I would call the order, the meeting of the, uh, RDA, our regular meeting. Uh, note that an opening ceremony has been held, roll call, and the first item is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of the minutes of the August 14th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any discussion of those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any communications, Mr. Pilot?
No, sir.
Any report?
No, thank you.
Then we move to adjourn the RDA meeting.
And I will call the order, the West Valley City Housing Authority regular meeting and note that all members are present and that we've had an opening ceremony. And we need approval of August 14th minutes.
I'll move for approval, the August 14th minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving August 14th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
This will be unanimous, any communications or report tonight, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, we introduce our resolution then for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Each year we are required to submit a report, uh, United States Housing and Urban Development for the purpose of giving public, enhancing public trust, as they stated in the requirement, that our housing authority is running their programs well. So this is for the Section 8 Management Assessment Program or the CMAP report that we submit each year. Uh, it is to be adopted formally by the governing body, in this case, the housing authority. It has 15 performance indicators upon which the housing authority is evaluating.
Okay, members, you've had time to review that document of management assessment. Do you have any questions or need for clarification? If not, a motion would be in order.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve resolution 12 25. Any discussion to that motion? Not all of those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This will be unanimous and they know the business before this body moves, stands true.